September 10th, 2014 Milton School Committee meeting will come to order. As is our tradition, please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and our country.
Pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, on the tonight's agenda, we have two changes. The special ed presentation on closing the achievement gap will not be tonight. We will be looking forward to that at one of our October meetings. And the bus fee analysis and recommendation will not be tonight. Similarly, we'll be looking at one of our October meetings for that presentation and And with that, I'll accept the September 10th agenda. I'd like to start by welcoming our student representatives, returning members Matt McCarthy and Audrey Erickson, and new sophomore member Spencer Torres. Welcome Spencer.
Thank you.
And just wanted you to know that you've got a pretty high bar. Matt and Audrey have by far been the most active and most involved school committee reps we've ever had, so feel free to jump right into these discussions. Let us know what you're thinking and why you're thinking it. I don't see anyone for citizen speak because there's no one in the audience, so I conclude there's no one for citizen speak. So let's move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you Chairman Walker. Welcome back from your summers and to all those smiling Milton High School students down there to the 2015 school year. We had a very busy summer in the Milton Public Schools. I've written in my blasts and communicated with the school committee, there were over 900 Milton Public Schools students involved in our summer programs using the high school and the Cunningham School. I want to recognize our custodians and maintenance staff in consolidated facilities townwide. They worked tirelessly the day the students left until the day before they returned, cleaning every space of every school. There was, there were painting projects, maintenance. We have a few Milton High School students who joined that crew and helped to empty out and clean every single locker, down to that level of cleaning. And so to Bill Ritchie, Bob Mayhew, and each and every custodian and maintenance employee, I want to personally thank them for the conditions that we came back to in the schools. We had a very positive, smooth beginning to school. I want to begin by saying we have had bus issues. We've had some transportation issues. One, we've had Pam Dorsey has, who heads our community schools, has always been in charge of transportation for the recent years, and she did not want to do that, take on that responsibility in addition to community schools. We posted that position. And Jake Smith, who is a classroom teacher at the Cunningham, worked all summer with the bus company, and he has put in the hours above and beyond. In the transition, there was an issue about an extra half bus in the afternoon. That's been solved and replaced. So that I want to assure the parents and guardians of the students in the Milton Public Schools that we're working to solve every one of the bus issues. We're making adjustments, and I realize, parents have said, well, now we've been in school two weeks, that the morning students are here on time, but there is no excuse for the lengthy bus rides that some elementary school students have had in the afternoon. But by the end of the week, we're going to have all of those solved. So I want to publicly recognize the patience of those parents and students, and the guardians of those students, and also recognize the teachers and principals. I've conveyed to Mr. Walker how those principals have been very patient and worked with us on those bus changes. So I want to recognize publicly that we have had bus issues, but I believe by Friday, those will all be solved. And I would also say that anyone who has a bus issue has communicated with Jake Smith or the bus number, but anyone who has a bus issue, I want them to email me, some parents do, but to email me directly, and we will solve every bus issue.
And I would just offer that that role is a high-stress role that is constant problem-solving, and Ms. Dorsey did do it and do it well for several years, so it's understandable that she might want to perform her real job.
So I should have started that by recognizing it. And Jake Smith is putting everything into it, but we're all working on it now, and that's no excuse. It will all be solved by the end of the week.
Can I just ask one question? Do we think that these issues resulted from performance on behalf of the vendor, the bus company, or some other cause?
Well, there was one issue in the transition that we, we weren't aware about, an additional run that was added to the Collicott Cunningham as a result of issues in past years. But no, I think it's just adjusting routes, changing stops, and really making those routes more effective, and, you know, making sure that every stop is, matches the needs of the family and the bus company. But that's a, that's a great question. I rode one of the buses today, and so we made some changes, and we'll continue to make those changes. But we, it brought you back riding the bus with the kids, the children in the afternoon. But the families were wonderful, and the children were wonderful. So we had a very smooth beginning. I'd like all of you to join me. This is Janet Sheehan's first school committee meeting as Assistant Superintendent. That's been a seamless transition. She hit the ground running, and it's been really wonderful, and I just said to her, I was very, very glad that she was with us here tonight. Again, we work with Mr. Walker in brainstorming the personnel issues. Holly Concanon, who was a language arts coordinator in the district, is now the principal of the Collicott School. We have had transitions within our curriculum coordinators. We have had movement within our administrative assistant positions, and we've detailed those in the email blast, and we'll detail all of them in one of my upcoming email blasts. But right from a new residency coordinator to a high school administrative assistant, but today's a very poignant day. Since 1997, Janet Potts has been a teacher aide at the Cunningham, and then worked in our special ed offices, and today's her last day. She was recognized by over 100 of her peers last night at a retirement party, and so there's been a lot of movement, but we'll detail that movement for the public. We've, we hired this year 29 teachers, and it's always important to explain to the public and to parents that that's not 29 new teachers. Those 29 teachers would have been filling the positions of teachers who retired. You wanted many of those teachers at your table last year. Teachers who have resigned, their families may have moved out of state. We have teachers who asked for leaves. We have, many times the leaves will be for maternity leaves, perhaps for one or two years. And so those 29 positions, really the three new positions that you approved in the budget, really four new positions you approved in the budget, one was the technology administrator. I want to recognize Assistant Superintendent Sheehan and working with the leadership team. We did extensive interviewing, and I'm very proud to announce to you that we've appointed Dr. Angela Burke. I'm going to ask Dr. Burke to join us at the table so that you can meet her. She has a very, very strong background. I said to Chairman Walker, when we had our first meeting with her, with Dr. Burke, and we set up interviews with all of our administrators, she said, when I finish those interviews, I'd like to get right into the classrooms. And so that's always a wonderful indication. She's just been here this week, reported back at the end of every day. We think that's going to be really an outstanding addition in the Milton Public Schools to really monitor and be responsible for between our school budget, our technology purchases, the capital purchases, and the MFE purchases, and all of the professional development for our staff, and really being responsible for that K-12 technology digital curriculum and the curriculum integration into every subject. So that is, you approved that in our advancement budget. Assistant Superintendent Sheehan and I and the leadership team interviewed extensively for the parent liaison. We collaborated with member Bagley Jones, who reviewed a resume of a candidate that we're in final discussions with. So I hope at our next meeting, I'll be able to announce that appointment. We haven't yet made that appointment. And we're still in the midst of interviewing for the data specialist. And so I hope at the next meeting, we'll be able to also announce that appointment. You also approved, over the summer, an additional health position at the Pierce School. I think that I've received more positive emails about the additional health teacher at Pierce School than a, than any position in recent history. And so parents are very aware that there'll be physical education and health at the Pierce Middle School, and I can't tell you how positive they've responded to that. And Principal Spalding is really responsible for really leading that, and the wellness team of members Bagley Jones and Padera have really raised the consciousness of all of us. And so 29-
I would just offer that in the technology position that Dr. Burke is filling, that member Sheridan played a significant role in helping us to define the responsibilities and requirements of that position.
Absolutely. Give credit where credit is due on all, remember Bagley Jones with the job description of the parent liaison, and member Sheridan with both the data analyst and the technology administrator refining that. And those job descriptions mattered, and we're reverted back to those job descriptions, and they're really, really valuable. For new positions, it's important to start out with the correct set of expectations, and it just wasn't easy. It was a lot of work, and I appreciate it. So that our 29 teachers have joined the Milton Public Schools, and I've asked Assistant Superintendent Sheehan, just for a few moments, to give you just an overview for parents watching and for the school committee, the lengths that we go to with the mentoring and the professional development, bringing in these new teachers and integrating them into the school district.
So we really have a very comprehensive plan for new teachers entering the system. There were three days set aside for teachers to participate in multiple activities. The first day was planned by some of our teacher leaders, and it's our teacher mentoring team. And so we, we want to thank the mentoring leadership team, John Radosta from the high school, Owen McElhenney from the middle school, and April Alagretza from the elementary schools. And they have really planned an extensive program that has been implemented over the past years. They have a mentoring handbook for new teachers. They have month at a glance, and it's a, it's a handbook for both the mentors and the proteges. It's a checklist, month by month. It includes just some, sort of the day-to-day tasks. It also includes information about parent communication, the evaluation tool, classroom management. So they cover a great number of topics. They get to meet their mentors. They, they have a nice lunch, and it really is a wonderful program. And we really received tremendous feedback in the next two days where there was the teacher orientation itself that was planned by the district. The, for the first day of the new teacher orientation, we had Superintendent Gormly speak. She welcomed and, and discussed expectations for, for new members of our teams. We also had members from, from the town. We had Diane Gore and her assistant, who talked about health insurance. We also had Barbara Paklenitis from Payroll, who discussed necessary information for new teachers. And Margaret Gibbons talked about union membership. On that first day, a lunch was provided again, and then the new teachers had an opportunity to meet with their principals back at their schools and see their classrooms and, and utilize that time at the schools. And the second day, we had another teacher leadership team that worked on technology, and they planned a number of activities, first led by Bob Patterson. So we wish to thank Bob, Jessica Royster, and Sarah Doherty. They planned a number of activities around technology resources in the district. So Bob talked about those resources. He talked about the school network, the Milton Public Schools website, and email, and so forth. Then we had information about EdLine, the professional development website, and a couple of the presenters covered Smart Notebook and Smart Exchange. They had, in the afternoon, what they called a technology petting zoo, and the, the new teachers got to use all of the tools that are in the classrooms in the various schools. So they, they particularly enjoyed that. They worked with Chromebooks and iPads. They had a chance to go over Study Island, some of the other programs unique to their schools. The, the groups divided, and they, they went over GradeQuick noodle tools for the Pearson Middle High School teachers. And in addition to Study Island, the elementary teachers took a look at everyday math and keyboarding without tiers, which will be newly implemented this year. The afternoon was focused on the new evaluation tool, and we had Carrie Devon, whom we want to thank, who facilitated that activity, and she brought the teachers up to date on the new evaluation tool. As you know, our, our, our teachers have already had a number of workshops, and so they got caught up, and it was, as I said, a very comprehensive program.
Also, thank you Assistant Superintendent Sheehan. Mr. Walker came to the luncheon, and on behalf of the school committee, welcomed the new teachers. And I think it's important to recognize our returning staff at the elementary level. There wasn't a teacher at the elementary level. It's sort of the nature of the position, that wasn't in school during the summer, and every classroom was ready to receive children. So those professional development days, we really schedule from the evaluation tool to new curriculum programs for reviewing IEPs. We really schedule those days for new teachers and all returning teachers. I would like to also recognize and report out that over the summer, working with the finance subcommittee, and again, the entire committee meeting after your retreat, that we monitored the enrollment all during the summer. And we added a new kindergarten at the Cunningham School, and a new English first grade at the Glover School. So the enrollment increased, and I've put that data in your packet, and I'll detail it in the blast, that we had, again, we went over our caps, and we're very close to the caps now. When I was detailing for this presentation and to put it out to parents, you should also know the second grades are getting very near their caps, and as new children move into the district, that really happens right through 12th grade. So I really appreciate your support, and advocating for kindergarten and first grade, it will make a difference for their entire school career. So those assignments were made, those teachers were interviewed, hired, and those classrooms were in place, and that furniture arrived before the students arrived. So it was very, very exciting to have those classrooms that completely assimilated into the district. So those were two, I think, very, again, you didn't anticipate having to add two new teachers when you went through your budget process, and we never anticipated. I said to the public that I had never seen that kind of influx in that number of new students at kindergarten and first grade before in the Milton Public Schools. Very briefly, we're going to invite Jackie Morgan, our food service director, to one of our meetings. There are new regulations around, from the federal government, around what food can be served to students during the school day, and now 30 minutes after the school day. But Jackie Morgan wrote a grant for $4,000 from the New England Dairy Council. She was awarded the grant the other day for a cart. You have to see it to believe it. I should have one of you tell the story about the breakfast program at Milton High School. Do any of you?
I mean, yeah, sure. So the breakfast cart is virtually what it is, is you walk in through the fieldhouse, and you just see, it's just a big green cart. I go to it just about every morning. After I worked out this morning, I went right to it. I usually get, you can get like kind of quick stuff, get a muffin, get a couple granola bars, a thing of milk, and some orange juice. It's perfect for me though, because I'm kind of like, if you're still, if you're on the go, you don't really have time to sit down and eat, you can grab that. It's quick, easy, and it kind of keeps you full throughout the day.
Well, I have to tell you that you're a better ad. You should stay with us. Jackie Morgan gives credit to Lynda Lee Sheridan for sharing, who's familiar with breakfast programs, how children of all ages really want something hot in the morning. And so you have to witness this cart, and the number of high school students using their passes, getting breakfast in the morning. So we've set up percentages to gauge ourselves to increase the breakfast program at every school. So we have ways to go at the elementary and at the Pierce School, but the high school has really set the standard, and we think if you can do it at the high school, you can do it at the elementary and middle. And the correlation to breakfast, to the research around obesity and diabetes, diabetes in later life, and just every single day, learning once you've had breakfast. So we've set some goals for ourselves, but Jackie Morgan's going to come and share more of that with all of you. Our open houses have been set up tomorrow night at Milton High School, Pierce the 18th, Glover Tucker and Cunningham the 23rd, and Collicott October 2nd. Those are on the front of the website. I would invite and encourage every parent in the viewing audience to attend these open houses. You visit your children's classrooms, hear the expectations from the teachers, and if you can see demonstrated from behind, we've already, they've already put up a display of the work of the students in the advanced placement art. So this building really is alive with displays of student work and preparation for tomorrow night. But I would encourage you to take a moment. It's really breathtaking. Friday night, Ms. Padera might want to do this part of the superintendent's report. Ms. Padera?
Well, I believe it's Friday Night Lights, right? Yes, and so you can get out of feeding your children dinner and just bring them to Friday Night Football game under the lights, and pizza, hot dogs, everything. There's face painting, I think, other kids' activities. The cookout starts at 5:00, and the game starts at 7:00. So I think kids under the age of, it's either 10 or 12 or 3. And, you know, what a perfect night. The weather's supposed to be nice, so I expect to see everybody there. My kids will be there.
So the boosters for the kickoff home game sponsor this event. Do our students have anything to say about this home opener?
What are our chances?
It's gonna be a tough game on Friday. I expect to come out with a win. We've been working hard all week on the, for the football team, really polished everything up today. It's a mental day tomorrow. We really could use the town sport throughout the whole game. Thank you.
Who are you playing?
Oh, we're playing Mansfield this week.
Well said, well said. There'll be no school on September 25th in honor of Ross Ashana. Celebrate Milton for everyone to circle on their calendars. October 5th this year, it will be at the Pierce Middle School. National Walk to School Day, you'll hear about later. October 8th is a growing event in our elementary schools. Ms. Padera and I attended the MFE board meeting in this very room the other night, and they're gearing up for the Monster Dash on October 26th. Would you want to report out on that?
Monster Dash, I'm trying to think of what's, I think it's a lot of the same activities, or is, I think they're going to put together the kids' run and kids' activities. So they'll pay, in the past, you paid for the kids to run, and there were all these other activities, but I think you're just paying one kid's fee, and then the kids will have all these activities. The 5K, there's going to be a lot of our student athletes from the high school running in their uniforms, from what I understand, this year. There will be a lot of people dressed up in costume. I think Mario said he's gonna be back. So should be a fun day.
And also to every Milton Public School parent, the MFE's annual letter has gone out. All of their school activities, I would encourage parents to go to the website and their individual teachers, EdLine, and school's website. Thank you Chairman Walker.
Thank you. So under the chairman's report, executive session vote report out. At our July 16th executive session, or August 20th executive session, we approve the following actions. A 2% cost of living adjustment for all HRS employees for fiscal year 15 effective July 1, 2014. We approved an annualized salary of $125,000 for Janet Sheehan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Human Resources for the duration of the assignment. We approved an annualized salary of $110,000 for Holly Concanon, principal at the Collicott Elementary School for the duration of the assignment. And $110,000 salaries for Jonathan Redden, principal of the Cunningham School, effective July 1, 2014. And for Dr. Elaine McNeil-Germay, principal of the Tucker School, effective July 1, 2014. And we approved a salary of $123,600 for Dr. Glenn Pavlichek, Assistant Superintendent for Business, effective July 1, 2014. And a retention bonus of $5,000 payable on or about January 1, 2016 for Dr. Pavlichek. And I have no follow-up items for this meeting, so let's go to Finance Subcommittee. Hi.
I thought that was being late, everyone. Well, we have the approval of vendor warrants. And, oh-
I have that.
Superintendent Gormly, if you have the total.
The motion is to approve $226,310.88.
So moved.
Second.
And that's warrant 11 dated 9/11/2014.
So on the motion to approve fiscal year 15, warrant number 11, in the amount of $226,310.88, all in favor? Opposed? Abstain. The motion carries. Old business citizen speak response. We have no, nothing under that agenda item. Next meeting agenda items, on the September 17th agenda, the agenda at this point is looking relatively light. I'm going to sit down with the superintendent tomorrow and make sure that there aren't any agenda items that we haven't anticipated that we would be adding, but that not being the case, I will poll the members as to whether we should keep that meeting on the schedule or move the small number of agenda items that we have there to our first October meeting. But I'll poll you by email on that, after the superintendent and I talk tomorrow.
I think it's a great idea.
It looks like we might have someone for citizen speak. Maura, do we have someone?
No.
Is there a listener?
Oh, well, welcome. Hello?
Hello.
Mr. Walker?
Yep.
Could I say something, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So tonight marks the beginning of my ninth year on the school committee, and the third year of my third term on the school committee. And I am here tonight to say to you that I will not be seeking a reelection in the spring. My job as a- My job as a K-8 principal in the Boston Public Schools is just, requires too much of my time to continue on the school committee. But I felt it was important to say this early so that people, wonderful townsfolk, would consider running for this position because it's an extremely rewarding position. You get to meet with, meet and work with really terrific people. I think you learn every single day that you serve on this committee, there's something to learn. And most importantly, or in addition, maybe not most importantly, but you also get to give back. For me, it was important to give back to this community that's given so much to me and my family. So it's a great job, if, it's a job. It's not a paid job, but it's a great job. And if anyone is interested, please feel free to contact me at LSheridan@MiltonPS.org. I'd be happy to talk to you about running for school committee or answer any questions that you might have. So, thank you.
Well, it's very early to start the goodbye speeches.
Don't. Please don't.
So I won't. But I will say that you were certainly instrumental in helping me to reach the decision to become involved in the school committee. And you were a great role model for what the chair should be like. So, thanks. I'll have a longer speech later.
You have a long time to prepare.
Right. With that, I'll entertain, oh-
One thing, I should have mentioned it when Mary was mentioning the happenings. I believe the invitations went out today for the Milton Library Foundation's gala, which is October 23rd. So if you haven't received an invitation, go to the website, and I won't be able to give it to you, but if you put in Milton Library Foundation, you'll be able to get it. One of the presentations we're going to have at the gala is Laurie Henry, who's our elementary, one of our elementary librarians, and Sarah Troeg, who's the children's, the head of the children's section at the library. And they will be making a presentation about the coordinated efforts between the Milton Public Schools and the Milton Public Library to increase early literacy. So it should be a great time. We have a couple of great authors who are going to be speaking. We have a great auction, so mark your calendar, October 23rd.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the deployment of security personnel, not to return to public session, the discussion of which would be detrimental to our security plans and procedures in public session.
So moved. Or second.
On the motion, Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Padera?
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ms. Dwarve, yes. We are moving to executive session, not to return to public session.